Good evening and welcome to the November 3rd meeting of Troy City Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of this meeting. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation by Mr. Brockie. Please stand.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna pray. God, thank you for this time together. God, watch over us as we deliberate over the different things that are happening here in the city and allow us to make the best decisions to allow this community to move forward in success and victory in all areas. God, thank you for watching over our military, allow them to defeat the enemies, and come home safe, in your name, and your son's name. Amen.
Mrs. Knight, please roll.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Swizer?
Here.
Mrs. Snead?
Here.
Mr. Tremblay?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
All members of council are present.
Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the October 20th meeting.
Minutes of council, October 20, 2014. A public hearing was held on ordinance number 031, 2014. Committee reports, Safety and Health Committee recommended legislation be prepared approving the 2015 funding for Marin County Public Health. Streets and sidewalks committee recommended the ODOT legislation be approved regarding paving as part of State Route 718. Committee recommends legislation be prepared authorizing an application to OPWC for funding for Mckagan Road improvements Phase 3. Utilities committee recommend that legislation be prepared to grant electric right-of-way and easement to Dayton Power and Light Company. Resolution number R42, 2014 bids for the Marina Building improvements, third reading and adopted. Resolution number R44, 2014 agreement with Loretta County General Health District for Public Health, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R45, 2014 application to Ohio Public Works Commission, Mckagan 3 improvements, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R46, 2014 consent with ODOT for improvements of State Route 718, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R47, 2014 right-of-way easement to DTNL, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number 031, 2014 a rezoning was given, public hearing, second reading. Following comments, council adjourned at 7:31 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
It's moved to accept the minutes as necessary.
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Phillips to approve the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
This is our group.
We will begin committee reports this evening with the Finance Committee and Chairperson, Mr. Tom Kendall.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have three reports this evening. First regards the administrative fee related to noxious weed mowing. On October 20th, this committee met regarding establishing a flat administrative fee of $100 related to each mowing when there had been a noxious weed violation. The current provision is an administrative fee of 20%. This equals $5.60, which does not cover the expenses associated with processing a violation. A flat fee of $100 represents the cost of the city for processing each mowing violation. It is recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared amending section 521.11 (G) of the ordinance to establish a flat administrative fee of $100 related to each mowing when there is violation of the noxious weed provisions. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Swizer, Mr. Tremblay, and myself as chair.
Are there any questions or comments from council on the report? You may continue, Mr. Kendall.
Okay, thank you. On October 20th, this committee met to consider authorizing the purchase of fuel for 2015 and bidding of certain supplies and materials for 2015. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety to purchase fuel quantities on the open market when needed during 2015 as firm prices cannot be attained through the standard bid process. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for the 2015 supply for asphalt materials, fire hydrants, and water meters as outlined in the detailed report. And this also is submitted by Mr. Swizer, Mr. Tremblay, and myself as chair.
Any questions from council? Please continue.
Okay. Finally, also on October 20th, this committee met to consider authorizing the contract for fireworks for July 4th for years 2015 and 2016. The cost would be $31,500 each year, which is the funding level since 2006. The contract includes a provision to get out of the contract in the second year should funding be in issue. The Troy Foundation has generously helped fund the fireworks in prior years and a great application will be submitted to the foundation if the contract is authorized by council. The city will also contact Concord Township, a funding partner since 2005, and Staunton Township regarding financial participation. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety to enter into a contract with the Rosy Company Incorporated at the cost not to exceed $31,500 each year for the July 4th, 2015 and 2016 fireworks. And again, this is submitted by Mr. Swizer, Mr. Tremblay, and myself as chair.
Any questions or comments from council? Do you have anything further?
No, I don't, thank you.
Thank you. Our next report is from the Law and Ordinance Committee and Chairman, Mr. John Swizer.
Yes, Madam President, we have one report. This committee met on October 27th to review a rezoning recommendation from the Troy Planning Commission. That In-Lot 2176 be rezoned from M2 Light Industrial District to R5 Single Family Residential District. This is the address of 1200 South Crawford Street. The rezoning has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. There were no comments made opposing the rezoning at the public hearing filed up toward 20th. The recommendation is we support the findings of the Planning Commission regarding the rezoning and recommend that ordinance number 031, 2014 be adopted to provide the, for the rezoning of In-Lot 2176 from M2 to R5, respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mrs. Snead, and myself as chair.
Does any other council have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Swizer. Next, we have Mr. Clark with a report from the Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. This committee members, Twist and Clark, met on October 28th regarding adjusting the starting wage rates for part-time seasonal workers by 15 cents per hour to be consistent with the new Ohio minimum wage law, $8.10 per hour effective January 1st, 2015. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared amending the rate for seasonal employees, temporary laborers, and temporary clerks to reflect a starting hourly wage of all new hires of $8.10 an hour as of January 1st, 2015 to comply with the Ohio minimum wage as required. This is respectfully submitted, Mr. Kendall, Mr. Twist, and myself as chair.
Are there any questions from council on the report?
We have no further.
Thank you. The next reports from the Recreation and Parks Committee and Chairman, Mr. Heath.
Thank you, Madam President. We have one report. This committee met on October 29th to consider request a .52 acre parcel on Staunton Road and an approximate 9.368 acre parcel on State Route 202. It declared a surplus and no longer needed for a public purpose and then the parcel will be sold. We note that the parcel on Staunton Road had been declared as surplus but was not correctly identified as Allen Park access at the time. Recommendation is that legislation be prepared declaring parcel D08250083 on Staunton Road and parcel D45250045 on State Route 202 as surplus and not needed for a public purpose. This is respectfully submitted by Mrs. Oda, Mr. Tremblay, and then Mr. Brockie and myself as chair.
Are there any questions from council on this report?
Yes, Madam President, I do.
Mr. Phillips?
Mr. Titterton, do we have any cost estimates on what it is taking us to ma, costing us to maintain each of these properties each year?
No, nothing calculated, no.
Are we doing any mowing or anything on them at this moment?
I know it's minimum, but we do try to maintain it below the cases.
The larger parcel on 202, does that fall in Conservancy District Waterways or anything like that? Is it close to? So it is usable land?
I'd have to look at the map, but I really don't think it was usable very much.
Those were my only two questions, thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Thank you. The last report is from the Streets and Sidewalks Committee and Chairman, Mr. Bobby Phillips.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The committee met October 27th regarding the final legislation which is to provide, to be provided by the Ohio Department of Transportation and related to the resurfacing of sections of State Route 55 and State Route 41 as part of the state's fiscal year 2015 programs. The city approved the consent legislation for the paving of the areas set forth in the attached detailed report. The city is required to pay 20% of the project cost. Based on the pre-bid estimate, the city's estimate cost is $125,216. After asking all of our pertinent questions, the committee did recommend that final legislation be provided by ODOT and be approved by council, including remitting the local share estimate of $125,216, which is based on the ODOT format, as well as the November 19 date that legislation and remittance is to be received by ODOT. We therefore support emergency legislation. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Heath, Mrs. Snead, and myself as chair.
Are there any questions from council on the report? Thank you, Mr. Phillips. We'll now open the meeting to citizen comments. There is a two-minute timeline at this point in the meeting and Mr. Titterton is our timekeeper. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to any of the agenda items this evening? And if so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address before addressing council.
Mr. Connor, 1210 South Place Creek, Troy, Ohio. I've got several questions. What is the cost of processing a violation? What does it cost the city of Troy to process a violation?
Mr. Titterton, if you'd like to respond, please.
Well, it depends on the type of violation. Can you be more specific?
For the, that you have on here for the $100 cost fee for mowing of noxious weeds and mowing of grass? That's my concern tonight.
On the average, it costs approximately $100 to process those kind of violations.
Could you give me and the Troy Daily News figures in black and white on a piece of paper and with a breakdown of what them costs are? Because I can't in my mind see how it would cost $100 for, to process any violation. I mean, you've got three letters that go out. I'm sure, I'm thinking your process is three letters to go out, which is just regular mail. Then you have a certified letter, which is, when I got mine, it was $3 and something cost the city, but now imagine maybe it's up to $5 or $6. So, you know, I mean, I just can't see where $100, I mean... And you're basing your thing here on 20% equals $5.60. You're saying that it only takes an hour for every mowing. But if it does take more than an hour, you charge more, so you get 20% of every one of those hours, which goes from $5.60 up to $10, $11, you know, for processing. And if it goes more than that, it's even higher again for your getting. I don't understand what's going on. Then I have, my other question is, why does Troy always have to check with other surrounding areas to see what they're charging? Why can't we just run city of Troy like we do our own homes and don't worry about keeping up with the Joneses? No offense. No offense. You know, the old saying, keep up with the Joneses. I mean, why can't we just do it in-house? We've got plenty of people making good wages here in Troy that got good minds. Pardon?
Anyone else need any comments at this point? Continue then with the resolutions and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R48, 2014.
Resolution number R48, 2014. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety, the city of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract with the Rosy Company Incorporated. This will be for the 2015 and 2016 fireworks, a two-year contract, not to exceed $31,500 per year, and the cost has not increased since 2006, first reading.
Are there any questions from council on the resolution?
Move for suspension.
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Kendall. Please suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Move to the dot.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swizer to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R49, 2014.
Resolution number R49, 2014. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety, the city of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for certain supplies for the year 2015. This would be for fire hydrants and for fire treatment or road paving materials and water meters, first reading.
Any comments from council on the resolution?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Clark to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Move to the dot. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swizer to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R50, 2014.
Resolution number R50, 2014. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety, the city of Troy, Ohio, to enter into agreement for the purchase of gasoline and diesel fuel after bidding on the open market and awarding contracts on a loss-to-bid basis. The city cannot receive firm bids on these items from vendors, so that is why we have legislation process in this manner. That is the first reading.
Are there any questions from council on the resolution?
Move for suspension. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snead? Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Move to the dot. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swizer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R51, 2014.
Resolution number R51, 2014. Final resolution authorizing the Ohio Department of Transportation project for the resurfacing of State Route 55 from Nashville Road to the beginning of Four Lanes, on State Route 55 from Franklin Street to Staunton Road, and on State Route 41 around the Public Square and to Cherry Street and declaring an emergency. This is the final legislation. It includes the city's payment of $125,216 as the current estimated 20% of the cost. This work will be done by ODOT early next year. It will be did in December, first reading.
Are there any questions from council on the resolution?
Move for suspension. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes. Move to the dot. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swizer and seconded by Mr. Tremblay to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Moving on to ordinances, we ask Mrs. Knight to read ordinance 031, 2014.
Ordinance number 031, 2014. Ordinance changing the zoning of In-Lot 2176 parcel number DO8022170 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from M2 Light Industrial District to R5 Single Family Residential District. This is the address of 1200 South Crawford Street. Has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission, third reading.
Are there any questions from council on the ordinance?
Move to the dot. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swizer and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance 032, 2014.
Ordinance number 032, 2014. Ordinance repealing ordinance number 024, 2013, establishing salaries of certain employees of the city of Troy, Ohio. This is adjusting the beginning step of the wage is for the temporary employees to match the minimum wage for the state of Ohio, first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Move to the dot. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance 033, 2014.
Ordinance number 033, 2014. An ordinance amending chapter 5.21 of the codified ordinances of the city of Troy, Ohio. This will amend the ordinances to establish a flat administrative fee of $100 to be assessed when there is a violation of noxious weeds, first reading.
Are there any questions from council on the ordinance?
Move for suspension. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Clark to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Move to the dot. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read our last ordinance of the evening, 034, 2014.
Ordinance number 034, 2014. Ordinance declaring municipal on-road property is no longer needed for municipal purposes and authorizing sale of such property. This is the first reading. This is a parcel that has access to Allen Park and a parcel on State Route 202, first reading.
Are there any questions from council on this ordinance?
Move to the dot. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Tremblay and seconded by Mr. Swizer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schweizer?
Yes.
Move to the down, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Schweizer to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Park?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schweizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
That completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
No, there are not.
Mary Bingham, do you have any comments this evening?
Well, thank you, Madam President. Just, uh, three, uh, announcements or points of interest. Uh, certainly Veterans Day ceremonies will be coming up on November eleventh, uh, on eleven o'clock at Veterans Memorial Park and Riverside Cemetery. Certainly would encourage all citizens to come out and show their support for the, uh, those, uh, that protect our freedoms every day. Certainly the, uh, military, uh, past and present, uh, sure, I hope it will come out and, uh, be a part of those ceremonies. Um, second thing is, just so you know, uh, the Christmas, believe it or not, the Christmas tree placement in downtown Troy will be this Thursday. Uh, sorry, I just shake her head, but it'll be in the AM. Uh, they'll, uh, take the tree down and, and Pickle Steel has been kind enough every year to, uh, support that project, bring it down. It'll be placed sometime in the AM, so if you're interested, um, that'll take place this Thursday, weather permitting. But, and the last one, you may or may not know, uh, congratulations are certainly in order to our Troy High School band. They received a superior number-one rating at the state level competition. Now, you have to qualify to get to state, and they received a one, in fact, they received a one about every competition they, uh, were in this year, uh, to get to state. So this is the musical equivalent to winning a state championship. It really is a wonderful thing for the Troy High School band and all those who perform in that band, plus their directors. So I wanted to certainly give a, uh, congratulations to them, uh, for what they've done to help promote our community in a positive way. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Titterington. Do you have any comments this evening?
Thank you, ma'am. I have several. Uh, just to give you an update on some of the projects that we've got ongoing or that are, uh, going to be started. First of all, on the Troy-Ubana, uh, intersection project in front of the fire station, that is, uh, on schedule to, uh, to be reopened, again, weather permitting. Uh, traffic has appeared to die off. The construction crews are working, uh, in fairly good weather for the most part, and so they're, uh, hopefully going to complete, uh, on time. Uh, CSX and the, uh, closure of Staunton Road, uh, the, uh, railroad crossing was scheduled to begin today. They had all the detours ready for CSX and ODOT, and, uh, CSX didn't show up. Uh, we will be tracking them down to see, uh, what their new schedule is. Uh, we knew it was going to be intermittent. They, they do want to keep some trains going. There are, there's only so much work they can do with the time, but because the, uh, the rails cross the entire intersection, it's not simple work, so it will take some time. Uh, but in case anybody gets any calls or inquiries about, well, you said that we're going to close the road down and it didn't, uh, we are, uh, at their mercy. It's their project and they have the right to close it whenever they want to, so.
They probably got derailed someplace.
Whoa. This way, not like, uh.
Anyway, uh, the, uh, the next closure, uh, could possibly be happening as early as next week, and that is the, uh, area of Adam Street between, uh, Main Street and Water Street. Uh, we anticipate the, uh, walkway between the ITW building and the County Annex Building, uh, will be demolished, deconstructed, pulled down, starting with the clock. Uh, they have said that they want to do that, uh, beginning next week. Uh, we will have access, uh, particularly for the school buses, uh, and, uh, we're in communication with, uh, with the schools on that project. I am hopeful that we will not have to keep a permanent, at least a, uh, full-time closure during that entire week, but, uh, we're still discussing that with the, uh, demolition crew and staff. And the final thing that I have is, uh, speaking of the holidays, the first, first one after Veterans Day coming up will be, of course, Thanksgiving. Uh, the twenty-seventh and the twenty-eighth, City Hall will be closed. However, with our new schedule on, uh, refuse and recycling pickup, they will be on the normal schedule. Uh, we will put that out on social media and our website, but just a reminder that[1472.24]